Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council for January 3rd, 2011 to order. First thing, as always, on the agenda is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson, Wyffenbach, Davis, Hadcock, Kroger, Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Waugh, Brown.
Here.
Mason. We have quorum.
We have quorum. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, we please ask that you either turn it off or put it to the vibrate mode. If you do need to take a phone call during the meeting, we would ask that you'd actually step out in the hallway. We thank you for that. Also, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, to our right. If there's any item on the agenda that you wish to speak to, please fill that out with your name and also the item. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we will not overlook you. Next on the agenda, as always, is invocation. I would ask that Pastor Peter Dahlberg from Bethel Assembly of God Church come up to the podium and give us the invocation. Everyone, please rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd have to turn that on, Pastor.
All right, I consider it a real privilege to be here for the first meeting in 2011. I have been around a while, I'll have to admit. I knew Bill Waugh when he was a boy. And in January, my mind always goes back to the World War II and the Battle of the Bulge, which was taking place right at this time, 66 years ago. And if you think the weather is bad here or cold, you should have been there. But somehow, we survived, and thank the Lord, we won the victory in the end. Winston Churchill said of it, "It was the greatest American battle of the war." We lost 19,000 men during that time, a real price, and as we know, freedom is not free. But let's bow together as we give thanks. Heavenly Father, we lift our hearts tonight in gratitude. Looking back over the past year, we see your hand that has guided and blessed and intervened time and time again. We thank you for your faithfulness, the promises you've given us in your word. We thank you for strength, for health, for guidance that you've so freely given, and we give you thanks. As we begin this new year, we acknowledge our need of your direction. We've not walked this way before. As we consider the tremendous challenges and possibilities that lie before us, we humbly ask for divine help and wisdom. We think of Solomon, who became king as a young man, knowing the heavy burden of responsibility that was placed upon him. He was given the choice of anything that he would ask for, and he asked for wisdom. And oh, God, you were pleased with his request and not only gave him wisdom, but promised him both riches and honor and longevity if he would follow your pathway. And today, we sense our need for that same wisdom. We pray that you will guide our mayor, our council members, in every decision, large or small. For we know that you alone know the end from the beginning. We ask that your divine favor shall rest upon our city, our entire community. We thank you for the growth and development through the years. And as we honor the past and press on into the future, we ask you to go before us, to bless all who serve in the various capacities throughout our city, the various departments, and our families, our homes. We pray for our nation as well tonight. Prepare our hearts for today, for tomorrow, and for eternity, through Jesus Christ our Lord, we pray. In his name, amen.
To the Lord of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate your coming this evening. Nexting on the agenda, as always, is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be added to tonight's agenda? Please keep in mind, we have an addendum, item number 54, which is on the agenda. Any other items? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item under all the person items called "Release of Letter of Commitment on Presidential Plaza Financing." Release of Letter of Commitment on Presidential Plaza Financing. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call that 40B. Any other items? Please turn on your light. If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And the two amendments is item 40B and also the note, item number 54, which is the addendum. We had a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Nexting on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the December 13th, 2010 special City Council meeting and the December 20th, 2010 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to awards and recognitions, and I'll ask the chief to come join me, and I saw Ray in the back, if he'd want to come on up. You know, it's always an honor to recognize those that have served our community for many years, and Ray Cornford is no exception. He has been with the city of Rapid City for, I think, 30-plus years, and he retired, I think it was as of the first of the year. So he's been retired for just a few days, but we wanted to take just a few minutes to actually recognize him for his service to our community. And with that, I'm going to introduce Steve Allen, our police chief, who will talk a little bit about Ray's career with the Rapid City Police Department. Chief?
Well, Ray Cornford came to us in January 1981 as a beat cop, driving a police car in a neighborhood around town. And when I came to work at the department four or five years later, he was working, I remember he was car six all the time. And that was one of the busiest areas. That was one of the, it's where we put the heavy hitters at that time. And so he spent many years providing service as a patrol officer to the city. And he was eventually promoted to sergeant, where he was a supervisor on a shift. He spent time in charge of our crime lab, and then he was promoted to lieutenant. And so he's seen the department change. The second part of that story is, in 1990, we became accredited, and that was a huge turning point for our department. And many of us were at a thousand-yard stare when this happened, and we weren't sure what we'd gotten into, and it felt different, looked different, and we were all worried. But there was one guy somewhere that wasn't so worried about it because he always had a knack for policy and procedure and documentation of things, and so we could hear his ears start perking up during this meeting in 1990, when we received our accreditation. Eventually, Ray would be put in charge of our accreditation program, and that's where he's been for quite some time now. And he's also been president two times, I think, of the, two times?
Six years.
Or a total of six years of the Rocky Mountain Accreditation Network. And he keeps getting nominated and elected to that position. And that's really, that really doesn't state how important he is in this organization, in the business of international accreditation. This last summer, I went to a conference with him to receive our accreditation award. And when I got there, I thought I would show it up with a movie star. People from all over the country were flocking to come see him and get his advice, and it was really a sight to see. And I thought, is it really Ray Cornford? And it was. I mean, he's a household name in the business of law enforcement accreditation. We're very proud to have had his service all these years. So if you would, join me in congratulating Ray on 30 years and for his retirement from the department.
I appreciate the ovation. Couldn't have done any of it without my family. They have supported me through the years. It's pretty important. It's been the quickest 30 years of my life. It's unbelievable, the amount of changes that I've seen in the department and in the city. It's great to live and work in a city like Rapid City. It's very progressive. And like the chief said, I have seen departments and cities across the country, and I always enjoy coming back here, the place I call home. It is a wonderful place. Thank you.
Let's get Chief Mike to come on over. Patty, come on up, please. We also have a very special guest tonight, and you may have seen Lucas's return to Rapid City here recently, but let me read this executive proclamation, which will tell you a little bit about what Lucas has been going through. It reads, "Whereas it is right and proper on special occasions that we recognize certain individuals, and whereas Lucas Goldammer, after graduation from Stevens High School, joined the United States Marine Corps on October 16th, 2006, and served as a military police officer with the Military Police Company Combat Logistics Regiment, 17th, 1st Marine Logistics Group, and whereas he served his first oversea tour in Iraq and his second tour in Afghanistan, and on November 2nd, 2010, his mine-resistant ambush-protected armored truck rolled over an improvised explosive device in Helmand Province in Afghanistan, and whereas, as a result of ensuing blasts, Lucas suffered multiple fractures to his legs, and whereas Lucas received a combat promotion from corporal to sergeant, and whereas he also received a Purple Heart due to his injuries, and whereas his mother Patty, his father Jeff, his brothers Kyle and his sister Jill, and Kelsey, as well as the members of his extended family are rightfully proud of his service to our nation, and whereas Rapid City demonstrated its overwhelming support and appreciation for Lucas by over 100 people, actually, it's closer to 200 people, I think, showed up at Rapid City Regional Airport, including active-duty service personnel, veterans, Boy Scouts, all gathered at Rapid City Regional Airport to give him a well-deserved heartfelt welcome home. And whereas our community offers its best wishes and to his speedy recovery, and where Lucas exemplifies the patriotism, dedication, and tenacity that makes the United States Marine Corps great, now therefore I, Alan Hanks, Mayor of the city of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim, January 3rd, 2011, as Lucas Goldammer Day." Again, it's always truly a pleasure to honor those that have served us. And Lucas, just for those that may not know, Lucas actually goes to San Diego tomorrow morning to actually continue his rehab from his injuries that he received. With that, I'm going to ask Bonnie, could you come on down? Bonnie, we have the honor of actually having Bonnie's mother with us tonight. She's here from Houston, Texas, and I'm going to read a little something for her. It says, "On the occasion of your visit to Rapid City," which hopefully will be many more, "and also, we recognize your pioneering spirit in helping other women break through the corporate glass ceiling through your stellar work as an employee and later starting your own successful business in Houston, Texas. And in recognition of raising a daughter, who we now refer to as Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson, we award you the Certificate of Honorary Citizenship for the city of Rapid City." Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Now, here's the trick. Even though you're now an honorary citizen, you still have to move to Rapid City if you Thank you, everyone. Next, we're on to general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Actions will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I believe I have one item from Rick Grable. Rick, is this, I believe, for general public comment period?
Yep.
Okay. We do time this, just so everyone knows. You'll have three minutes, so if you come forward, Rick, identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Okay. I'm Rich Grable. I'm here on behalf of the Mount Rushmore Road Group, and I just want to tell the council, the mayor and the council, thank you for your continued support of the rebuilding and beautification of Mount Rushmore Road, and especially the bearing of the unsightly power lines. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work on that. I do not have any other speaker request forms for the general public comment period. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to any issue not on the agenda? If not, we will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items, items 1 through 41 inclusive. Chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period in items 1 through 35 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on items 1 through 35. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to any of the items 1 through 35 inclusive? Not? Chair? Thank you. We have a motion, second to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. This is items 1 through 35 inclusive, and the chair would ask if any items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. I do have item number 23 we do need to pull. Any other items? Please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman, let's go to Jeff Barbeer.
Item 24.
Is it 24?
Yeah.
My apologies. Okay. And 24. We need to pull 23 and 24. Thank you. And let's go to Alderman Bill Waugh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item number 6.
Item number 6. Any other items? So far, we're going to pull items 6, 23, and 24. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 35 inclusive, with the exception of items 6, 23, and 24.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to item number 6, which is a Public Works Committee. I'll ask Alderman Sam Quaker, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, to please read that in place.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 6 is request the mayor to direct staff to prepare requests for proposals for consultant services to do a feasibility study for all options at the Horace Mann site for sake of discussion. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention and the mayor's, and there was some minimal discussion at the Public Works meeting that during the feasibility study of all the options, we definitely want to keep in mind the Pony League field up there.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of correspondence between interested parties in the Pony League situation, and I would hope that they would be brought to the table during these studies and discussions. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to request staff to prepare an RFP. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting where this was discussed. Can we have a little bit of information on why it came about and why we're moving forward on the feasibility study, instead of just taking the recommendation from the Public Works?
Okay. I'm going to go to Robert Ellis, who gave us a report, and it was his recommendation to actually have someone, a consultant, come in and give us recommendations. Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
Yeah, we took a quick look at the site, just to see if you could put a tank pool and a leisure pool and the required minimum parking spaces on the site that exists today at Horace Mann. And yes, it is feasible that you could put it on there, logistically, it can be built. I have questions about its functionality, whether or not you will be able to utilize that site the way that you really want to after you make a large investment like this, whether or not the 200 parking spaces are really going to meet the needs of the uses up there, because that's about what you could fit in there, is 200 parking spaces. So my recommendation to the committee was, you could do this if you'd like, but it probably makes good sense to investigate a little bit further, I believe, from the discussion at Public Works. The request to prepare an RFP to look at these items. Cost analysis, what it would cost to place this here. The site suitability, we know we have geotechnical issues with the soils at that site. Geotechnical analysis, parking needs analysis, confirmation from the Pony League that they intend to continue to use that site and make improvements that are needed to that field. Other options at the Horace Mann site, some type of a hybrid of a tank pool, leisure pool was also asked. Contact the school district to determine whether or not they would work with the city to utilize a very small portion of property that they own, very close to this site, and also other possible locations for these facilities. So from my notes, that is what we would include in the RFP.
Thank you.
If you still have the floor, if you'd like it.
And the funding source for this feasibility study was coming from?
I suppose I would sit down with the Parks Director and see if we can identify some funding within the Parks Department budget.
Just a couple of things. Large investment, I still believe that I wouldn't mind it there, but I think it's, because of investment and common sense, it seems like it would work better to put the pool, not the leisure pool, but the tank pool at Roosevelt. So I don't know how much this is going to cost or what that comes down to, but hopefully it's not a huge amount to get this done, to figure out some common sense things that I think in the end we're going to, bottom line, say that it's going to need to be at Roosevelt because of the landscaping, geo, just from living in that area and being around that pool and watching how this all came about, it just seems the common sense thing is it will probably end up in the tank area over by Roosevelt. But maybe that's just a guesstimate, but I would hope we would take into account taxpayers' money and what this is going to cost to do all this extra work on something that seems pretty sensible in the first place.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Could I ask Mr. Ellis a question?
Sure, please, go ahead.
Okay. And maybe it's finance officer, but traditionally, would this money come from like the Vision 2012, the feasibility study come from Vision 2012 as opposed to somewhere else?
The answer is, if the council so chooses, that could certainly be a funding source.
I agree with Ms. Hadcock that the terrain there is, looks like it's going to be a little tough, but I think we owe it to the citizens there in North Rapid to make sure that we have looked at the options and give them the best product for their neighborhood. So I would like to go ahead and see the feasibility study done.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Robert Ellis, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Robert, for any study that's done to implement both of these facilities on this one track of land, would any of that be necessary if we were just going to go with one facility?
Mr. Ellis?
I think the geotechnical analysis would be something valuable towards the reconstruction of maybe one pool. If it's decided that either a leisure pool or a tank pool is located up there, that would not be wasted, and it wasted effort that could be reused with the construction of that facility.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, in my mind, made up a move in the pool to the Roosevelt Center, if it makes sense. I think that if the council has a different opinion of that, then we should go ahead with this. Maybe we should take it in a phase-type thing. If it doesn't pass the geotechnical, there's no sense of going any further. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would ask that question to Public Works.
Mr. Ellis?
That was one of my largest concerns. If you're going to fit both of those facilities on that site, you're going to have to remove a large quantity of dirt up there, and that concerns me that you have a large tank pool, a heavy body of water and concrete that's sitting there, that now some of the support foundation for that is being removed and retaining wall is installed. That's my big concern. So that would be one of the first things that we would look at is, what type of soils are we dealing with? So that when the designer goes into looking at what type of options do we really have for locating one or both of the pools up here, that we're not trying to sell something to the public before we know if it's possible. So that would definitely be one of the first things we do.
So would that make sense? Just, I mean, if the council so chose to have a geotechnical process taking place up there, then we could stop after that point? Or, I mean, maybe the council's already got their mind made up of where they want to put the pool? That's going to be a lot of traffic up there, if it generates any business at all.
Yeah. We could stage this RFP such that we select somebody to do everything that we may end up doing, but do this in phases where the first step is the geotech. Make a report on that, determine if there's enough need to move forward to the next phase. If there is, look at possible site designs. If it still looks like this is moving forward, then go out to the public for public input. If it still looks like this thing has traction, come up with cost analysis's, various options. So yes, we could stage this under several different tasks for the consultant to perform.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
That would be, what is required at the Roosevelt site? I mean, is this something that is included in this feasibility?
I personally have not looked at the Roosevelt site. The Parks Department may have done some exploratory investigations into obstacles that they may encounter at that site, but I personally have not looked at that.
Anything else, Mr. Wyffenbach?
I guess I would take back my comment, that I'd be ready to make that decision if we haven't done the same geotechnical studies over there, if we're putting this pool in. Last thing I'd hate to see is have it break like the last one did, so I'm not sure, is there someone here that can answer that question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Your question, I don't think Jerry--
About the geotechnical part of Roosevelt. Has it been prepared? Is it ready for the pool, if the council so chose?
I'm going to try and, I don't think there's, as far as the actual location where the proposed pool was set, the answer is no. Have there been geotech work done at Roosevelt? The answer is yes, because they did that when they built the Aquatic Center.
That would be my question. I mean, if the council chooses to move forward, I would assume that they're looking at that for a site, too. I'll yield to my colleagues.
I'm going to ask a quick question, Mr. Ellis. It was my assumption, and hopefully I was right, that they investigate both sites as far as-- far as citing the pool. So Roosevelt will be looked at as part of this RFP as far as citing it?
We can certainly do that, yes.
Was that part of the original motion or not?
I can't say that geotechnical was discussed at the Roosevelt site. It was only discussed at Horace Mann, but we can make that part of the RFP. We can really refine this RFP, because we've been asked to bring the RFP back to the council. At that time, you'll see each of the tasks are identified, and the council can weigh in on whether or not the direction, that's the direction I'd like to go.
Very good. Mr. Wyffenbach, anything else, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think if we voted for it, we could change it if there need be. I just, and maybe at that point in time, we could do some research to see if Roosevelt had been checked out, too. Thank you.
Very good. I'm going to go to Alderman Dave Davis, who has not spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, comment for Robert Ellis. Robert, you mentioned that one of the options on the RFP was to deal with the cost factor of the pools, but you didn't mention the Pony League field. And I guess I just would make sure that, to play off of Councilman Waugh's earlier comment, that when we're doing the cost analysis, that we also look at the cost that may be accrued if we have to move that field, because that's certainly not going to be an inexpensive option. So if you'd make sure you add that to the RFP as well. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just again, we have, what, four point two, four point five to do these pools? And I just want to say, I am in favor of doing both pools. I just want to make sure that the citizens are getting most, the best bang for the buck instead of cutting corners and doing halfway on some of the pools, or have what happened last time on the pool. You want to make sure you're getting what we need on the pool. That's what I'm worried about more than, let's just fit it in this area and make sure we do a cost analysis. And it's to make sure we're getting what we wanted in the first place. And basically, are we getting the needs of that area taken care of? And are we getting the needs of the Roosevelt area taken care of? Because sometimes you're worried about just a certain part of people that are on the North Rapid. It's about Rapid City. A lot of people are going to use those pools. So I agree with listening, and the main thing is to take some public opinion, because I've had a lot of opinion from people coming up on the tank pools of, I don't think people are listening to us on the council of what we need for that tank pool and what that size needs to be. And when you have a tank pool and you want it to be a racing pool, that these are the needs that are going to make that pool work for a racing pool, instead of just thinking, I need a fifty-meter pool, you need a warm-up pool, you need locker rooms, you need different things that are going to accompany that to make that a successful pool. So a lot of those needs are already met for that tank pool at the Swim Center already, which makes that an awesome location in one sense. Now are we really just ready to spend that cost and that money to make sure that happens at this pool? Plus, have enough room. So I'm into doing what is best for the citizens of Rapid City, but I'm really worried about the four point two or the four point five costs that we are going to be eating up on a lot of these, either feasibility studies and other things, when we should be spending on public opinion or time on public opinion, and what is it really that we're wanting? And what are the needs? Not always what we want, I should say, is what the needs are in that area and what's going to be the most successful for the people there. So hopefully, it's about the citizens of Rapid City on the whole area, because I know a lot of my people on the South Rapid and Robbinsdale use those pools a lot. In fact, a lot of the people that I know, they go to the north, to the new park over there, and it's more used than a lot of the parks that we have already. So let's make it for all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Alderman Wyffenbach for his comments about the geotech, because that is really something that's going to make this project fly, one way or the other. Another equally important part is the tract of land that's currently owned by the Rapid City School District. It is about one and a quarter acres, and I think that if we had that available, our options would be greatly improved as far as how we could fit everything on this site. So that's what I personally would like to see from the feasibility study, because if in the end we can fit all this on one site, I think that is going to be a benefit to the taxpayers. We're going to have the ability to have the construction mobilized once. We're going to have the use of shared facilities, not only from an infrastructure standpoint, but also we'll be able to have it staffed with fewer people, or so I've been told. So I'm really looking forward to what comes back from this study, and I believe we will know on January eleventh, Jerry Cole is meeting with the school district to discuss the use of that land. So I yield.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to approve the request for direct staff to go out. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank our city council vice president and city council's engineer for the measurements that he did at the last, or council meeting a few weeks ago, which helped change the dynamics of this discussion. I think that this is moving in the right direction, and I just want to thank Erin for his work on this. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve the request to direct staff to go out for RFP. Any further discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number twenty-three, that's under legal and finance. We'll go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. Could you please read in item number twenty-three?
Twenty-three is confirm appointment of Ron Burnell, Mike Derby, Majory Harlin, I don't, can't read that name, Jeanette Keck. You got a new one? Sorry, hold on just a second. Confirm appointments, ad hoc Chappa Valley Emergency Management Task Force to Ron Burnell, Mike Derby, Majory Harlin, I can't read that name. Zabin, sorry about that, Zabinu Adatsu? Jeanette Keck, George Larson, Margaret McIntyre, Linda Sandvik, Richard Tupper, Tim Billings, and Anthony Carbyle. Vicky Fisher and Lieutenant Pete Ragdon?
Ragdon.
And Brent Kohlstad, and Dave Davis, and Bill Waugh.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. My apologies for the confusion. We were waiting for one name, and that was the last name on the list, and that was a name from the state DOT. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank you for providing us with the explanation of whether or not the particular appointments are voting or not, because I know that's always a question. So thank you for providing that.
Very good, thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item twenty-four, Deb, if you would, please.
This is the right one? Confirm appointment of Mary Floto as Assistant Finance Officer. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes at this time. Mr. Barbier, if you would, go ahead and swear Mary in.
Aye, Mary Floto.
Aye, Mary Floto.
Solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
Solemnly swear that I will defend the Constitution, support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of South Dakota.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, for the purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially defend the duty, perform the duty.
Of the Office of Assistant Finance Officer, Rapid City Finance Department, Rapid City, South Dakota.
Of the Office of Assistant Finance Officer, Rapid City, South Dakota.
According to the law and to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the law and the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Mary. Just so you know, when us elected officials take that, they give us a cheat sheet, just so you know.
I kept my cheat sheet.
Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the non-consent calendar. This is items thirty-six through forty-one. Thirty-six through forty-one, chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items thirty-six through forty-one inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Cheryl, did you get the second? Who was it? Dave Davis. Very good. We have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have one speaker request form from Rod Pettigrew, item number thirty-nine. And there again, please keep in mind, we do time this, so Rod, if you'd come up, identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours.
I'm Rod Pettigrew, and I was a member of the previous task force that the mayor appointed, and I'm on the current task force with the sign committee in town. And I'm here to ask that you grant us an extension for the time that's needed for us to accomplish our job. We've been meeting the last four to five weeks, weekly. We've extended our time from sixty minutes to ninety minutes, once a week. We all have jobs, and we're just running out of time. We've probably just scratched the surface in trying to get to the job at hand. More importantly, I would ask that the council link the moratorium, that's supposed to run out February one, to the extension of the task force. Several members of the task force, myself included, feel that linking those two together is very important, and we would just ask your consideration in that. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request from Terry Olson, item number thirty-nine. Mr. Olson.
Terry Olson, Lamar Advertising, Rapid City, South Dakota. Is this on, Marcia? Like I said, I'm Terry with Lamar Advertising, Rapid City, South Dakota. We have no problem with the extension as far as the signed code task force. We do have some issues with extending the moratorium. We have issues with landowners that want to have us move our billboards. We have long-term leases on them, on that particular location, so it's another essence that we get this billboard moved, so he can continue with his building program. Now, one of the issues in the signed code task force is how many billboards have been taken down. So all these figures are based upon code enforcement. In two thousand and two, Rapid City registered two hundred and seventy-one off-premise signed billboards. As of two hundred and ten, code enforcement recorded seventy-five off-premises have been removed. That's been a net reduction of twenty-eight percent. That means over one-fourth of the billboards that have been removed in Rapid City in the late eight years. Now, if you take two hundred and seventy-one billboards that we had in two thousand and two, times five hundred square foot, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred square foot of billboards that are currently in Rapid City as of two thousand and two. Seventy-five billboards have been removed at five hundred square foot, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred square feet. Now Lamar personally has removed twelve thousand, I'm sorry, has reduced twelve thousand square foot of billboards. These billboards are currently still up and still functioning and still operate on the realm of the code. So if you take the, on the lower left, total square foot removed, thirty-seven five, square foot reduced is twelve thousand, you get a total reduction that's been removed or reduced of forty-eight, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So billboards, the net footprint of billboards, the square footage in Rapid City has been reduced by thirty-six point six percent. Now, these figures are conservative, and we're probably pushing closer to forty percent. These are under the current code. So the current code is working. We have no problem extending the signed code task force work. We have a problem with the, extending the moratorium to expire February first. One of the issues where is that if you reduce, if you pull the moratorium, there'll be a rush to put in new applications. Well, you had about a two-week window where everybody could have done that by the time the city put the moratorium in, and when the moratorium actually went into effect, and there were zero applications put in. And also, there's been zero new billboards built in the city of Rapid City in the last, in the last eight years. Like I said, we have reduced some. Sign companies will step up to the plate. We have been to every signed code task force, I have been personally. I speak from the cheap seats, from the cheap seats, rather, which is fine, but we're there every time. We want to get this code done, we want to get the code done correctly. We don't want to go through this again. However, we want to do our business. One last point in closing. I proposed something with the signed code task force, and that was, if you want to get rid of more billboards currently, relax the code. Right now, I got some big, huge billboards in Rapid City that I would reduce immediately if I could, but the code won't let me. So we're kind of stalemate. So what I'm saying, if you want more billboards reduced, relax the code. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Brandon Casey, item number thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. I guess my recommendation now is kind of bifurcated, given what Terry said, and I can't hardly believe this, but that was perfectly said, I think. My first recommendation would be, no, do not extend this. This committee has had plenty of time to go through our twenty-eight-page signed code, and quite frankly, we're still talking about definition, nomenclature, and vernacular. As most of you guys know, I am also relegated to the cheap seats, but it's given me kind of an interesting perspective on this committee. We've heard testimony from building inspection almost at every meeting that says, there are no problems with the billboard, guys. They abide by the code, we have a reduction in signs, we have a reduction in square feet, and there are two other sections to the code, in my opinion, that is prohibited signs and on-premise signs. And this committee, like clockwork, goes right back to billboards. So I don't know what we can do beyond what we've already done and how much we've complied. I guess my first recommendation is, do not extend. If you do choose to extend, I think, given particularly what Terry said, given what the committee is coming back to you for an extension, says to me that the committee is looking for some direction, or at least, let's cut the code down, or at least the scope down, to where the problems lie. So my recommendation number two is, eliminate billboards, have the committee emphasize on on-premise and prohibited signs. These are banners, illegal signage, all of which has already been discussed in committee. There's all kinds of ordinance in the code, but none of it's enforced. That's two-thirds of your code. So those are my two recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do not have any additional speaker request forms. And there again, we're dealing with items thirty-six through forty-one at this point, thirty-six through forty-one. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak to items thirty-six through forty-one? Not? Chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Under ordinances, item number thirty-six. Deb, if you would, please.
Thirty-six is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven oh one, amending title fifteen, chapter fifteen point two-four of the Rapid City Municipal Code by adopting the two thousand and nine Uniform Plumbing Code and adding amendments thereto. Can I continue till January eighteenth?
We have a motion and a second to continue item number thirty-six to the January eighteenth city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thirty-seven, please.
Thirty-seven is first reading, ordinance number fifty-seven oh six, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for rezoning from Park Forest District to low-density residential district located west of current western terminus of Alma Street and Sagwood Street, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is first reading of ordinance number fifty-seven oh six, item number thirty-seven on the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Hey, thank you. There's nothing linked to this, to this, so I really don't know where it is.
Let's go to Marcia Elkins. The reason is, it's a first reading. And first readings, they typically don't have links, but Marcia?
That's correct. We don't-
We don't provide that information until the recommendation comes forward to you, and that is then attached at that point in time. This was a process that was instituted a number of years ago to expedite the process. This particular piece of property is where the city intends to locate a water reservoir in the Rainbow Ridge area, on the ridge line, and so this is...
Marcia, could you please explain as far as the recommendation? That comes from the planning commission.
Correct. The planning commission recommendation, the planning commission will consider this item on Thursday morning, and their recommendation will be before you have a public hearing and consider second reading.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, first reading of ordinance number 5706. Same for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number thirty-eight, please.
Thirty-eight is a request by Fifth Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Joseph Hecker for a layout plan located at 6030 Almanell, Naker, El, Unitel Acres, and move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval, item number thirty-eight. Approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the Public Works Committee items, items thirty-nine. Alderman Quaker, if you'd please.
Item thirty-nine is the ad hoc signed code revision task force extension request, and for the sake of discussion, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and just for clarification, I'm going to, would you like Alderman Costello to explain, or do you have that information? Let's go to Alderman Costello for the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be my pleasure to explain, and a little latitude, because I'd like to couple this with sort of an update as well.
Sure.
At the last, at the last signed code revision task force meeting, there were really three items of note, and I tried to contact everyone about this beforehand. So the first was not anything, or simply for information, and that is that the, get my pages straight here, there will, the signed code revision task force is going to hold public meetings for input on the signed code. There will be two of them held. The first one will be January 12, 2011, and the time will be from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And the second will be on January 18, 2011, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And both of these meetings will be in the first-floor community room, and I encourage anyone interested to please show up there and share in the discussion. The second two were items that were requested, that we take action on. The first is as listed on the agenda. That is a request to extend the signed code task force's deadline for reporting from February 1, 2011, to April 18, 2011. The methodology behind that date is that it gives us, it gives the committee six months from the date of inception to go through the signed code. As Terry said, it is a very daunting task to go through this whole signed code, and the task force decided that if they had the extension, they could go about it diligently and intelligently, which I think will be the best for all of us in the end. The second item that was asked, that we were asked to take action on, does involve a moratorium. And this request is that we extend the moratorium for new and digital conversions for off-premise signs until April 18. And just for clarification, that applies only to digital, and that would be new digital signs put up, or the conversion of a static sign to a digital. That being said, I understand the motion on the floor is about the extension, so we'll go with discussion there.
Okay, very good. I'm going to go back to Alderman and Sam Quaker. Do you want to clarify your motion? Would you prefer someone else? Let's go to Alderman and Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. That is my motion, and the clarification is that the moratorium is scaled back to apply only to digital...
New and conversion.
For new and digital conversions.
Okay. And that's all right with the second. Who is the second, Charlene? Okay, that's all right with the second. Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve the extension of the timeline to April 18, and to extend the moratorium to only cover new and conversion digital signs. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Hadcock.
Mayor, I'd like to do a substitute to break that into three parts, in case people are wanting to agree with the public meetings and the task force movement to a different date, but not to agree with the moratorium. So I think it'd be easier, again, if we do a, I would ask for a substitute to break it into three parts and vote on it separately.
Okay. Okay. When you say three parts, I'm seeing two here. Deb, help me with the third.
There's a public meeting, one, there's an extension of the task force, and then there's the moratorium.
Okay. Very good. I'm going to go to Jason Green. There again, what we're talking about is basically division of the question.
And I believe at this point, it would reside with the chair to make the determination about the best way to divide the question. If the member asking for division disagrees with the determination of the chair, that could be appealed to the body as a whole.
Okay, very good. At this point, the chair will consider the division of the question, so we'll take up the two issues separately. I think that'll probably save us some little bit of debate. So the first question we will take up, and Deb, I think we can do this in two parts. Basically, the extension and the hearings, I think, are basically one and the same. And then I think the question is, the moratorium will be the other one. So the first question before the council that we will debate is the continuation of the deadline to the April 18 date. Is there any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for, excuse me, City Attorney Green.
Go ahead, please.
One of the comments, Jason, that has been brought up is that there may be a group of citizens that want to petition for a referendum. If this is extended to April 18, is there still enough time for them to do that and have it on the June ballot?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
My suspicion is that the answer is no, because I don't think you're going to have enough time to get ballots printed after that time period. But I'd really need to sit down with statutes and a calendar to determine exactly when those time periods fall. But my guess is that April 18 is after the point where the ballots will have been printed for the June election. They'll have to be ready for, you know, absentee ballots several weeks before that, so I don't think that's probably going to work.
Mr. Davis, you still have the floor.
Thank you.
My suggestion, Mr. Davis, is, if I'm not mistaken, I'm going to, I think I asked this question of Amber, the deadlines for petitions, which would, I think, be the same timeline, I believe it's March 31st. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
That seems correct to me, yes.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to the extension of either of these issues, but I, I'm concerned about the opportunity to extend it past, or our extending the deadline past the opportunity for people to react in a way that some have mentioned that they may want to. And I understand the idea, Aaron, of having six months, and I have no problem with that, other than the fact that if we don't bring something back in time, we really have extended it far beyond April 18, because they're really looking at the November election before they could put something on the ballot. And I, I'm not sure that's bad. I just think we need to be aware that when we vote on April 18, we're really looking at extending the referendum date to November, not June. So just a point of clarification. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor, the question on the floor, is the continuation motion to the April 18, let's see, to, is that a council meeting, I assume, April 18? Somebody have a calendar in front of them? It is? Okay. Just for clarification, the deadline would be to the April 18 City Council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking for some clarification on, what part are we, are we trying to divide the question right now?
No, the question has already been divided. The chair ruled that the question is divided, so the only thing in front of the council at this point is the question of whether or not we want to extend the reporting deadline to the April 18. The moratorium will be a separate question coming up shortly.
Okay, then I'll make my comments now, since I won't have another opportunity.
Well, you, actually, if it's on the moratorium, we'll be debating that in just a minute.
Okay. This is just on the, on the committee, and I want to apologize to the people that we put on the committee to put them through this without any direction. I've sat up here, and I still have yet to understand what their goal is. If their goal is to eliminate billboards inside the city, then let's just tell these guys to pack their tents and leave town. If their goal is to reduce some of the signs, then let's come to the table with a plan that says, I've been on the council for three years, and I haven't had, I've had one person call me in reference to any billboard, and it was not even in the city, it was outside the city. If there's people in our community who want to bring this to a vote, let them bring it to a vote. The other thing that we have to understand is, we are, this is also a constitutional amendment-type item. These people that run businesses have the same rights as individuals, whether we understand that or not, and we should all understand that. They have the same rights as individuals. They have property rights, they have all the same rights. What we're doing here is trying to regulate these guys out of business, and they don't even know what they're up against. If it solely comes down to, we don't want any more static digital billboards in town, then let's just do that, then. Let's just, let's don't set our signed task force up for the same thing. This kind of reminds me of when I was raising my teenage daughter, and I had followed her to Sturgis for a softball game, and she followed the car in front of her so closely that I, after we got to there, I said, you know what? You can't follow that car so closely, because the next time, you're going to run into the back end of that car. And sure enough, it wasn't even a week later, she runs into the back end of somebody's car. When we set up this signed task force, and there was a deadline set, February 1, that was an adamant deadline, drawing a line in the sand. We've had signed task forces, ever since I can remember, I've lived in the city for 40 years, and roughly 40 years, and I don't know what makes us any smarter than the council people that laid these rules down previously. They've got rules, they've got regulations, they're not out there putting up signs left and right. If you want to really look and see who's putting up signs left and right, you better look at the on-premise. They've already been two or three new flashing, blinking, scrolling signs on Mount Rushmore Road in the last three months. That's probably, there's a total of, I suppose, maybe 12 or 13, if my numbers are correct, electronic billboards inside the city, and I think one of them is the city's. So that's almost 10% of them being the cities themselves. And again, I want to apologize for the task force not giving them a clear and concise direction. I'm not even sure where it's at anymore. What did we assemble them for? What is their goal? What is their end goal? And I'm hoping that somebody up here can tell me, if we're going to extend this, what is the goal? I'd sit here right now, right tonight, and hammer this thing out. What we're doing is regulating these people's business, and we're putting them on hold. And I don't want them to do that to my business, it's heavily regulated already, but I don't need the city intervening in regulations. We, as a council, look at health, safety, and welfare of the community. I have yet to see any of those problems identified. If someone up here can identify one health, safety, or welfare problem with these billboards, I'll be more than happy to put a moratorium on them. Show me one billboard that fell over on somebody's car, one billboard that caused an accident, anything like that, in reference, and make sure you reference anything else that has a sign in this town, whether it's a billboard, or somebody out there flashing their sign, whatever, they are trying to generate traffic for their business. If we're going to regulate people's business, let's regulate them all. Let's bring in everybody in here who owns and operates a business within or outside of our city, and find some sort of more regulations to put on them with no direct goal of what we're trying to do to them. I just need someone to answer to me, tell me what we're trying to accomplish with these billboards. If we're trying to truly eliminate some billboards, which they showed you the numbers, if that's what we're trying to do, then let's work with these guys and get it done. I've said it over and over, setting up our signed task force for failure, because there's real no real true direction. We set up a task force and tell them to come back with something. I'm elected by my constituents in my ward, that's who I, I will be responsible to when this thing comes back. If they don't like me, they won't reelect me. They don't like my decisions, they don't like my comments, they won't reelect me. But I've been here three years, and have not had one person in this city come to me and say, that billboard right there, that's one I think is unsafe, or unhealthy, or detriment to the welfare of the community. I'm hoping that someone can point one of those out to me and see if we can't take care of it. So I'm not sure why we're extending this, why we're even doing it, so I'm just hoping that my colleagues can explain that to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to extend the deadline from February 1 to the April 18 City Council meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, please. I believe it passed, but...
Wyffenbach. Davis. Hadcock. Kroger. Costello.
Aye.
Quaker.
Aye.
Wa. Brown. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Very good. Seven to two, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, everyone. That is, that part of the question. The other part of the question is the extension of the moratorium to the April 18 date to only to cover new and conversion digital billboards. Okay? That is what we're discussing right now. Discussion on that motion, whether or not we should extend the moratorium from February 1 to April 18, just to cover new and conversion billboards. Okay? Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question was unclear, but I'm asking again, Mr. Mayor, if someone in here has the answer, what is their goal? What are they trying to accomplish? I see these people out in the middle of the ocean, no direction, there's no land in sight, but they're told to swim to the closest beach. Mr. Mayor, I would like someone to answer my question. Maybe I can, I'm not sure who to direct it to, maybe you can give me some guidance on that.
Okay.
Maybe I'll ask if I could direct it to Mr. Costello. He's on the committee, he's the liaison, I think, to the committee. What is the goal here for this committee? What did it originally start out with, and where are we at today? What is the goal?
Mr. Costello.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Wyffenbach, and I really wish there was an easy answer to this. I don't feel entirely comfortable speaking for the entire committee, because there are many different goals on there, and that's been part of the challenge, is to narrow that down to something that we can focus on. I believe one goal is, as was mentioned, a reduction in signs in general throughout the city. Another goal that I've caught wind of is a regulation on digital billboards, perhaps trying to decide just, you know, maybe, or how do I put this simply? Deciding how and where they best fit with our city, as to not become a distraction. I think another goal is simplification, which I think goes in line with what Mr. Olson says, or may go in line with what Mr. Olson says, as far as loosening it up. You've heard Mr. Casey tell us many times that the signed code is larger than the adult-oriented business code, and I think one goal of the committee is to simplify that. That's, does that satisfy you for now, Mr. Wyffenbach?
Mr. Wyffenbach, you have the floor, sir.
That's the best answer you can give, I understand. That's the problem. That's, that's seen in here lies the problem. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask someone in the city here, maybe Marcia would, would know, how many, how many static electronic billboards do we currently have?
I think, I think you need to clarify. Static electronic, are you talking about static?
Static electronic, it's one type of billboard, the one that doesn't flash, blink, or scroll.
Okay.
That's what we're looking at doing a moratorium on tonight.
I can't answer that question off the top of my head.
Off-premise.
Maybe I could ask Mr. Olson or Mr. Casey, how many they have each. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Olson, do you happen to know? I think it's less than a dozen. I think it's, as far as digital billboards, off-prem, digital billboards, how many are in town, do you know?
I think we, we have five.
Okay.
Six, I'm sorry, six.
And Mr. Casey, I think you have seven? Okay, so thirteen.
So the, Mr. Casey's are obviously different than Mr. Olson's, than Lamar. There's, I think Lamar, I mean, I don't think you can get any more blinking, flashing billboards, they're all, we already have regulations that regulate the flashing, blinking process... We already have regulations that regulate the flashing, blinking process of an off-premise billboard, but we don't have anything that regulates on-premise, and I'm not advocating that we regulate on-premise at all. But the point is, when I ask the question what the goals are, I don't think they started out anywhere near this, but it's still convoluted, so I agree to, if we need to have it looked at again, then that's fine, and I think extending is fine, but a moratorium, to me, makes no sense at all. I mean, this is a clear instance of the government starting at one point and regulating into the businesses even farther. I mean, this is just a starting tipping point for the rest of the people in the community to have their businesses regulated. I mean, if you don't like the way billboards look, I understand. But there's houses in my neighborhood, I don't like the way they look. There's businesses in my neighborhood, I don't like the way they look. There's a lot of things that I don't like the way they look, but I can't step that line and regulate these things without some clear objective that meets the safety, health, and welfare of the community. And I guess I would maybe, Mr. Mayor, direct one more question to our city attorney, and that question would be, is these blinking, flashing, scrolling lights, what substantial issue is safety, health, and well-being of the community? How have we proven that to be a problem?
Green?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer the question. I don't know that anyone has undertaken a scientific study to prove that it is a particular problem. However, I don't think that's the standard that's required for a governing body to enact an ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare. But I'm sorry, I can't answer your question any more than that. All I can tell you is that you don't have to have proof beyond a reasonable doubt to enact an ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare when the governing body makes the determination that that is in the best interest of the community.
So, Mr. Mayor, so in essence, by enacting this moratorium, we're saying that these billboards are, in essence, in our opinion, a health, safety, or welfare issue? Is that... Would that be correct?
Mr. Green?
I think that's implicit in the council's action, yes.
Okay. Well, then I challenge the council. Explain it to me one more time. What is it? What is the issue we have with these billboards? If there's particular billboards that are problems, let's point them out, let's get them fixed, let's move on. So keep dragging out these people's businesses. It's not fair to them. I wouldn't expect that any other businessperson, whether they sell furniture, whether they sell... Do mortgages for people, whether they're hairstylists or engineers, to face this same type of scrutiny, because a few people don't agree with the way they do business. If it is a major problem, a substantial problem to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, let's address it and get it taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Headcock.
Thank you, Mr. Wyffenbach. I appreciate what you're saying. I believe the same thing. I think it looks like this council is picking on billboards. It looks like it by, when you're listening, visual pollution again is on and off-premise. And the only thing I keep hearing about still is billboards and moratoriums on billboards. It's not about static on on and off, it's about off. It's not about the bigger signs that are bigger than most billboards in Rapid City. We don't call that visual pollution, but we call it billboard visual pollution. I don't get it yet. I still haven't got it, go down Eighth Street. It's living fact that those on-premise signs are bigger than billboards, but now we have somebody talking about a referendum about going after billboard companies on a council meeting, and we don't think we're picking on billboards. I'll keep saying this, visual pollution comes with on and off-premise. It's not just billboards. And we have pulled this forward as the council to come after billboard companies. Now we want to change the billboard rules and regs, but we're still not talking a lot of the on-premise sign issues. I'll challenge you, and I'll challenge that committee again, count how many signs, static signs, or digital signs that are bigger than billboards in Rapid City that are more visual pollution than the billboards. There's three billboards on Eighth Street, if I'm correct, and look at how many, there's probably at least ten to fifteen signs that are bigger than those billboards that should be regulated in a positive way as well. I don't pick on one or the other. I think if there's visual pollution, let's downsize them so the whole street looks good, and let's not pick and choose which ones are ugly and which ones aren't, and make sure that it's a billboard, because I'm not seeing the difference. And I'll keep saying this, that should be, with the sign company, the same thing. Start looking at visual pollution and what really visual pollution is. They're also putting the power lines underneath the street because that's visual pollution. There's a lot of things that are visual pollution besides billboards. I'm not a billboard lover. I'm a person in Rapid City that cares about people's businesses, and I want to treat people fairly. And when I see it, and it's not just one thing, then we got to make sure we're fair to both sides. And we want to put a... Keep this moratorium on, we want to talk about referendums. Let's talk about this council bringing visual pollution to a referendum and figure out what is really the visual pollution of Rapid City. Is it the on-premise or the billboards? Because I think if we promote it as it's like the billboards, and we keep talking about it like it is, then that's why the citizens of Rapid City think it is, I think. That's why it comes to a head. But if we promoted that on-premise are just as big, and just as bright, and just as gaudy, I think we'd find that people would notice that more, and that would bring forward, and maybe that would bring the referendum forward on people on on-premise signs. I'm not against signs, really. I'm against the visual pollution and making sure that we are taking both sides of this and putting it forward to the citizens of Rapid City in a fair and just way. That's all it's about. I'm not going to vote for this moratorium because I'm tired of the game. I'm listening to people that are literally, they don't want the billboards, and this is their game. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Hi, thank you. I would say it's not about what we think, and it's about what the citizens think. And I have had many citizens talk to me about billboards, that it bothers them, and they want them to be regulated and controlled. If they weren't a detriment to the well-being, I don't think to the city, I don't think we would have fine citizens like Mr. Pettigrew serving repeatedly on billboard sign task force. Obviously, people of all walks of life have come on these task force to serve because they feel there is a need to regulate the billboards and signs, and that's why we did this new meeting, was because we were going to look at all the signs, not just pick on the billboard people. I have... It sounds to me, with Mr. Olson, that he said they've had zero applications for new signs, so that tells me there won't be a negative repercussion to their business if we do keep the moratorium on. The... If the citizens take this to a vote, and if they would bring up to vote that there be a taking of billboards to remove all of them, this would cost the citizens of Rapid City millions, probably, I don't even know how much, but multiple millions of dollars. So it's very incumbent on the council to get serious about this and try to avoid that kind of vote, because it will end up costing the taxpayers a lot of money. One of my concerns about the moratorium, if we lift it, if it automatically gets lifted on April 18th, and the council has not been able to study it, or understand it, or how it's going to work, because it seems to me that's what happened the last time there was a moratorium, that people didn't realize how it would work. And so I am concerned that we either need to have a longer moratorium so that the council has the time to look at it, or that we get it ahead of time so that we've had time to look at it by then April 18th. And I would also think that I'm going to be going to some of these public meetings and looking ahead of time, because if this task force does not... If the recommendations do not get approved at that time, like the last time, then I think several of the council members need to step up to the plate and bring something right away to put into action. So I don't want to mess with people's businesses, but this has been going on and on and on, and people are tired of it, and it's going to end up costing the citizens millions of dollars as this goes to a vote, and we have to have a taking of billboards, which means we have to pay the sign companies to take down their billboards. We cannot afford that, so we need to get serious and regulate them for the people of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been a lot of comments made tonight. I'd just like to clarify a couple of them. I share many of the concerns that I hear from both sides of this subject, but one of the main ones that I share comes from Alderman Wyffenbach, that we really sent this committee out and most likely, it appears anyway, without a real outcome in mind, and that's unfair to them once again. But one of the things that really concerns me about this is that my understanding is that this task force was sent to look at the entire sign code, not the billboard code, but the entire sign code. Now, whether or not they've done that, only those that have been there and they report to us can say that maybe they're attacking one point, or picking on somebody, or whatever. But it was my understanding that it was the entire code. In turn, it was my understanding that the extension tonight was to extend this committee till April 18th to study the entire code, not just billboards. So I find it a little humorous when I ask a question if this date would now be short as far as for those that have questioned me about a referendum, that I'm suddenly attacking the billboards. I wanted to know if my citizens are being protected if I vote to extend it past March 31st, and the answer that I received was no, they were not, whichever side of that referendum they're on. That's the point. This ad hoc committee was studying the entire sign code, on-premise, off-premise, city-owned, the entire code. I don't want to lose sight of that. So that is of great concern to me when we start drawing conclusions of what someone else's intent is, and quite frankly, I... As I look up and down this table, aside from some that may have some ownership in boards, I think I've probably bought more billboards in the last ten years than most, if any. So I'm... Hard to tell me that I'm against billboards. But I do have a question, Mr. Olson, if I may...
Go ahead, ask your question, please.
Terry, you made a comment that... I'd just like you to clarify. You said that you would remove boards today, but the code will not allow you to do so. Obviously, there's...
Right.
Expand on that, could you please?
Sure. The current code said I can only reduce it to 240 square feet, 250 square feet. Well, I got boards out there on Highway 79, Highway 44, Highway 16, that are almost 600 square feet. And the reason they're 600 square feet is the speed limit is there 70, and on the interstate, it's, you know, 70 right there also. And 250 square feet is not big enough to read a board, especially when the board's on the left-hand side of the highway. We call the left-hand reader, because you're reading all the way across the other lane, you can't see it. We're willing to reduce those down to 378 square feet, down to 672, but we can't. The code won't let us, so we're at a stag... So we're at a stalemate.
Okay. Go ahead, please finish up.
I'm sorry. So we have these big billboards that we can't reduce, because reducing them down that small would make them useless. And so we have these big ones that the citizens of Rapid City are upset about, and we'd reduce them down in a heartbeat, if the city would let us.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, you still have the floor, sir.
Just to clarify that, Terry, I thought I heard you earlier that you said you would remove boards. That's what I wrote down, and what you're saying is that you would reduce them in size.
Reduce them. And you know what? Compromise is the name of it, Mr. Davis.
I just wanted to make sure that there weren't boards out there that you were willing to take down and remove, and there was something stopping you. I understand the reduction in size would be...
Yeah.
Bring it down to code would be smaller than what's feasible for you.
I would take some down with a pass on another one. I'd compromise, take it on a case-by-case basis. We want to clean Rapid City up, if you'll let us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, anything else? Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we post the minutes for this task force on the Internet?
Charlene, are they not on the... I thought the minutes of the meeting were actually on the Internet. Alderman Quaker, did you not find them?
Alderman Juan, I have been looking for them, and we haven't been able to find them, so...
Okay.
And then also, I just wanted to mention that board member, or one of the task force members, Pat Hamilton, went to a lot of work to contact all of us, asked us for our thoughts and feedback. She put it in some documentation, sent it out to the entire council. Perhaps that could be included as part of the... Maybe that could be included as part of the minutes or the task force proceeding, so that people can be aware of some of the feedback that was provided. And I do agree that there was probably not enough direction given to the task force in the beginning. However, I think that some of the members of the task force have done an excellent job of, you know, working through some of these issues, documenting them, and sending them out. So I think that there really is a concerted effort here to try to improve the process. There is some definition discussion as to what the word improvement really means, but I look forward to the continued discussion and the recommendation.
Thank you. Further discussion, I'm going to go to Alderman Ron Kroger, who has not had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. If I might ask a growth management director a question. Marcia, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but Mr. Olson stated that there hasn't been any new signs put up in the last five years. Is that basically a true statement?
Marcia?
I'd have to review the...
I think we've had these discussions in previous meetings, and I think it's probably correct that there hasn't been. And I guess that the one reason I'm not going to support the extending the moratorium is basically this, is there's no question that the off-premise signs are very restrictive, and they're very tough to get anything accomplished. I think all of us agree with that. And my understanding is that if we're talking, the sign companies wanting to put up a new digital board, that has to go through the use and review process.
Marcia, is that correct? Yes, thank you.
Okay, that is correct. It has to go through the use and review process, so I guess if there's concern out there that the sign companies will, the minute we take the moratorium off, come in with a bunch of applications to do some signs, I don't think it's going to happen. And even if they did move forward and ask for some new signs, and they wanted to be digital, I don't believe there's the votes up here today to approve a use and review. So I have no problem taking off the moratorium, and I won't be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown, who has not had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been contacted by a lot of people. My ward mate says he hasn't been contacted, but it's probably because I used to be in the visitor industry business. He used to have a lot of billboards and that. But the people, when they talk to me, basically, what are they looking for? Two things. They wrap all the billboards, the size, the number of them that are on the interstate, the long railroad tracks, they wrap all of that up into... Same thing in Rapid City. They don't want to see the size and the number of billboards that they see out on the interstates and the highways coming into Rapid City. So if you get a big billboard, like exists on Mount Rushmore Road, huge one, whoops, we got one. Are we going to get two? Are we going to get more? So I agree with Terry, size is a factor. What I... The comments I hear, I want smaller, I want fewer of the billboards, so I can see the businesses, so I can see traffic. One of the reasons I finally dropped all seventeen of my billboards that I had to advertise the best western town in country was because people told me, "Why don't you have some signage? I don't see yours." There's so doggone many of them, you couldn't read mine. There's so doggone many of them, you couldn't read mine. It was a waste of money for me. The fellow that bought the business, I had five left when I got out, he got rid of all of them, and he owned three of them. So I agree with Terry in that I think we need to look at the code as how it affects and keeps the ability of the companies to do that. I think they've got enough shots across their bow that know that the city council and that end committees are not going to just let them have free wheel like they had in the past. It's got to be reasonable, and the citizens in town are upset, size and number. They don't want the interstate look and that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weyfenbach.
These are exactly the conversations I was looking for, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate my colleague from Ward One and Mr. Davis is trying to identify where the issue is. But if you look at the current code and you look at what's happened, these digital billboards all come through on a use on review, and so the council sits up here and says, you know what? We're not going to do that. But if you look at a digital billboard, number one, they're fewer in number, and number two, they're smaller in size, and they look nicer. They don't have big giant floodlights hanging off of them, they don't have big obstruction ladders hanging in front of them. But what happens is, because of the sign credit process that we have, that these people, like Terry Olson alluded to earlier, and I think Alderman Davis asked him the question, was is how does the sign code prohibit you from taking care of this mess? And it prohibits him from taking care of the mess because I've had several conversations with him and Mr. Casey that said if we would come to the table with an open mind and negotiate, and I've heard from several different council people up here that people don't like billboards, and like I said, and I'll reiterate, I haven't had anybody call me, because they do lump the interstate and those things, but those are out of our control. So we might as well just push that aside and make sure everybody understands the things that happen out there are not inside the city, we don't control those. But we do control what happens in the city, and there is several of them that we could get rid of. But I'm telling you, as a businessperson, there's absolutely no way that I would take down those signs and cut my revenue and not be able to put up another sign to recoup my revenue. But if we sit down and talk to these people and we can identify the signs that we'd like to eliminate and come up with a place that they could maybe put up a nice digital sign that looks nice, operates nice, doesn't blink, flash, or scroll like several on-premise signs that are popping up everywhere in everybody's neighborhood, or even on the schools. The city owns one of the biggest blinking, flashing, scrolling signs in this community. So I think...I don't think that they...the sign company, I don't know if they've not communicated it well, but I think they're getting there after the comments that I've heard up here tonight that say we'd like to reduce the number of signs, and we'd like to reduce the signs. Well, I hate to tell you guys, there's one way to do that, without eliminating their income, because there's nobody in there that has a business bone in their body that's going to say, yeah, I'm just going to go ahead and cut my revenue by 25 or 30% to make you happy. They're not going to do that. But they would do is eliminate some of the big ugly billboards, cut them down, take...remove them if they had an opportunity to actually use the system that was put in place. We put a system in place that said, okay, Mr. Lamar advertising, you can take down these billboards, and then we're going to give you this phony money. You take this phony money and you bring it back to the council, and you can replace the billboards you took down for, I think it's two-for-one or four-for-one with electronic billboard. Ah, but we forgot to tell you, though, we're not going to approve it. That's what's happening right now, and so we're all talking about the same thing, but the problem is we're not all getting in the same room and actually hammering this thing out. I think if people could identify, when your constituents call you and say they don't like the billboards, you ask them, identify them for me, and let's get together and let's go through town, let's look at them, let's identify them, let's get with these guys, and make it equitable to them to do it. I think that's a good business decision. I don't think anybody that runs a business would make a decision on cutting their profits by 25 or 30% on purpose. I think if we gave them an option to say, let's get rid of some of these big ugly ones, let's zone these electronic, static electronic ones, not the blinking, flashing, scrolling, because there's already policies in place that does not allow those, and let's make them smaller because they're smaller, and let's make them fewer because they can put more messages on one billboard. So I think that we're heading in the right direction by having this conversation, and I appreciate the input after asking the questions, so... And I think it was made very clearly that this task force was to look at the whole sign code, but yet we're coming down to putting a moratorium on one of them, just the static electronic digital, which is probably the least problem that we have in our city right now, at least the least growing problem. So I think that, you know, if we can define the direction or whatever, I don't think this moratorium is necessary. I think it eliminates these people from moving forward and eliminating, because they don't want the maintenance on those big ugly billboards anyway. That's even not even cost-effective for them. If we sat down and you actually talked to these guys in earnest and seen what their problems were and matched them up with what the problems that the citizens were having, I think you'd find a really good compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is to extend the moratorium on digital and conversion digital only from February 1st to April 18th. We've been going on this discussion for almost an hour, so I'm going to ask the council if we could please try and keep it on topic. We have a couple more lights here. Let's go to...let's see, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
There's 28 pages of the sign code. How many of those, Aaron, by chance, do you know, or maybe someone knows? Is that most of that on billboards? Does anybody...Marcia, do you know if a lot of that's on the billboards, or is it on just a certain...is it on on-premise signs or illegal signs?
Marcia?
It's a wide range of everything from off-premise to on-premise, to exempt the procedures for identifying sign districts and the like.
Right. So it's basically a kind of a neutral area, and then there's areas where you go into legal on-premise and off-premise, right?
It's the whole gamut of issues.
And I apologize, I need to...I actually need to go and get into this a little bit more. I guess I've been listening to people, but I think it's what you're putting out there, too, of people calling you about billboards, because many times people will read the billboard stuff in the newspaper, and then you'll say, did you see 8th Street? We use 8th Street as an example because, you know, most of us travel that, most people know that. And do you tell them to go look at it? And you say, be fair. When you go look at 8th Street, be fair and see if it's the billboards. Do you give people the other side of the story to look at, or do you just agree with them on billboards that are polluting? Because I agree with Mr. Brown that a lot of times, people are more worried about, they're looking on the outsides when you're leaving town, and it's just clutter, and they don't want that to happen in Rapid City. But we've done it anyway, again with on-premise signs. We've done it with on-premise signs. So you took down a billboard and you didn't want to identify yourself on a billboard, but you made a sign just as big as a billboard, but you hate billboards. I am not getting that. I have people coming up that their sign is bigger, their business sign is bigger than a billboard, and it flashes, and it's bright. And it's just amazed me when you tell that to a customer, or you tell that to a bunch of women in a beauty shop, or even guys sitting there, they're like, you're right. You have to give them two sides of what's happening for them to understand, and then they're pretty soon, they're like, wow, you're right, it's not billboards. So I know this is about the moratorium, but we're trying to get across to the citizens of Rapid City whether you're going to do a referendum or not. Be fair to a business. We're talking about a business here. If this was yours and I just picked on yours, in a sense, and put a moratorium on you when there's other people that are just doing the same things you are, but we've picked on this certain area, it's wrong. That's my bottom line. It's not about just a billboard. It's being fair to businesses or people when you know the common sense is there's two sides to that story, and there's always more people doing the same thing that these people are doing. But you know what? Politically, it's easier to go after four companies than it is 5,000 in Rapid City. So you know who I'm going to go after? It's easier to go after those four, because those on-premise signs in Rapid City, how many of these council members or the people on this task force are ready to reduce those signs on those people of the 5,000 businesses in Rapid City that have big signs, flashing signs, and illegal signs? I can tell you right now, that's a lot of people, and you're going to have a lot more emails and a lot more things changing those people's minds, because their business on 8th Street, and it might be further back, so they need that bigger sign. Well, these guys are telling you the same thing as billboard people. They're telling you the same thing as an on-premise sign, but that's different, because that's a business. I don't see any difference, and I'll keep saying that. Go look for yourselves on on-premise signs. I have a business with an on-premise sign. Go look at them and see if they are more clutter than the other. And if you want to reduce, let's be fair to all of them, look at any signs of 10 by 10 in Rapid City and see if the real issue is a billboard. I think y'all are going to freak out and come back and say, you know, you're right. The billboards are less than the on-premise. Count them. And I don't know, I love this sign company or the sign committee going and looking at all the issues, but I'm hoping that the bottom line is they look at all the issues. That's all I'm asking them to do. If they come back with a fair and just proposal that says that, you know, these people are just as much and they don't make it political, or they don't make it because their friends have a big sign, or they can't do that to those people, then remember, then don't do it to the billboard companies, because it's got to be across the board. For me, that's where I'm about. Make it fair.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Bonnie Peterson, and we're going to wrap this up, and I'm just about ready to ask for a motion to call the question. Bonnie Peterson.
I just wanted to say that this sign task force is looking at on-premise and off-premise signs. That's what their...one of their challenges. And also, I want to say that the billboard companies have been very well represented on both task force. They've been in a position to share their generosity and willingness with the task force people to what they would be willing to do. They've...this has been going on for months. And so, anyway, I am going to be voting to keep the moratorium so that they will continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Erin Costello.
Thank you, and just quickly, I'd like to thank all the council members for their input here. I assure you that the task force members are watching this online, and those that haven't are going to review it, so your voice has been heard, I assure you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Call the question.
Thank you. Is there any objection to calling the question? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to extend the moratorium on new and conversion digital boards only from February 1st to April 18th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. Roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Weyfenbach.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Hattcock.
Aye.
Kroger.
No.
Costello.
Aye.
Quaker.
Aye.
Wa.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Okay, motion fails on a five to four vote. Okay? And Jason, just check me on this. Since that is the case, the current moratorium that is in place stays, and it will expire as of February 1st. Okay? Thank you, everyone, for the discussion.
Is that your vote?
It was five to four.
I'm sorry.
Oh, motion failed.
I was saying that you could...
Yeah, no. Motion fails on a five to four vote. There were five noes, four yeses. Thank you. Okay, let's see, that takes us two bids. Mr. Barbeer.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have one bid. It is for Sledge Polymer for the Water Reclamation Division. The low bidder was Atlantic Coast Polymers with a unit price of $1.11 per pound. It's an estimated quantity of 60,000 pounds, gave us an estimated total price of $66,600. City staff recommends awarding this contract to Atlantic Coast Polymers and approving that unit price of $1.11 per pound.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Atlantic Coast Polymer for a unit price of $1.11 per unit.
Correct.
Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That was it, wasn't it?
Yep.
Very good. Item number 40A, this is an item brought from Alderman Quaker, letter of commitment for the Presidential Plaza. Alderman Quaker.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The council recently, I think it was on the 28th of December, received a request requesting the release of the letter of commitment for financing for the Presidential Plaza project downtown. My understanding is that is in the process of being released, and was wondering if we have a commitment as to the date that that will be released.
My understanding, Mr. Quaker, and I...did you get the email that I sent this afternoon?
I did.
Okay, very good. Brian Vulcan, who represents the Investors Group of St. Joel C., says it's available to the council members at any time, they can certainly just request, and he'll make it available to any council member at this point.
Thank you. And it will be available to the citizen that requested it?
Actually, I have had a conversation with him, and he is satisfied that all the council members that have access to it, he did not specifically request access to it, but I think that was included in the email I also sent you.
So...and I appreciate the clarification, and the reason I brought this up is because I know that this has been asked by others, and so I thought the best way to save time and be efficient is to just bring it up tonight. Is it...is that document then not a public document? I mean, the...you know, I...the citizen that requested was hoping to see the document, and I brought forward the request on that individual's behalf, and then he also contacted the rest of the council, too. So I think it's important, if we can, to just go ahead and just release it. Is there anything that...
I'm going to go to Jason Green.
The city can't release a document it doesn't own, and as far as I know, the only document that exists is something that's in the possession of the Investor Group. It's a communication from their financing institution. It's their document, it's not the city's document. So really, the decision at this point is up to them, you know, unless the council wanted to request written clarification from the Investor Group's, you know, financial institution, I think that that would be appropriate. But at this point in time, the city doesn't have the document, so we can't release it.
And Mr. Quaker, if I may. Mr. Vulcan was actually in my office, I believe it was Thursday of last week. He is going to contact the bank and try and get a revised commitment letter, and the reason he needs a revised commitment letter, if you remember, the project has changed in scope as they are adding residential units, and so some of the stipulations are going to change. So my understanding is that he's working on trying to get an updated commitment letter from one of the local financial institutions. I don't want to say which one, but that it should be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay? Very good. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Weyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, because I had some constituents ask me, stop me in the street, and I think that there was an article in the Journal written by a former mayor that alluded to the fact that that letter of intent didn't exist. It'd be nice to put it to rest.
Very good.
And so you said it's available right now to the council. Would we just call Brian or Forefront Design or something?
That's my understanding. You said it's certainly available to any of the council members. That is the current one, and his comment to me was that they were...have requested a revised letter of commitment as the project has changed scope somewhat, but it is...the current one is available at any time.
I just want to be able to put it to rest.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, and to address Alderman Weyfenbach's comments on putting it to rest, I think if one of us would get the letter and just release it to the rest of the council, which means you're releasing it to quorum and then just release it publicly, then there wouldn't be as many questions. So is it appropriate to offer...very spoken, I guess, but can we get that letter, that initial letter, released with the understanding, obviously, that there might be a revision down the line? Can we do that?
I think we can make that request. We don't have the ability to release something we don't have, but we can certainly make a request to actually get a copy of a commitment letter from Mr. Vulcan that can be released.
I think that requesting something that could be released is the most the council could do.
Yep. And my understanding is he's made that commitment, so if that changes by the next council meeting, I would suggest just bring up a motion. But my understanding is, the conversation I had with him is he was more than willing to share the current one, and that he was trying to get a revised copy to reflect the current project. So could we have a motion to acknowledge the discussion, please?
Submove.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2012 update. Mr. Ellis.
Just wanna be to make aware to the council, and that is, the performing arts facility was, the bid was awarded to Skull Construction, and that would obligate the final $3.25 million available from the Vision 2012 for that project. So, the project is moving forward, and that is the only update I have.
Very good. Discussion, or a motion to acknowledge?
Move to acknowledge.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge, and discussion on the motion. Mr. Green, my understanding is, the bid came in in a favorable condition, so that the dollar amount is appropriate?
Yes, I believe the bid was awarded at $3.265 million, and there was a little bit under $100,000 that they will be coming up with their, utilizing their own funds that the Vision 2012 funds did not cover. So, and did appear that they were favorable, were, were able to award a number of the alternates.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge, any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the public hearing items. We have a continued public hearing consent item, but we only have one item on there, so let's just take it up. Item number 42, let's see. Alderman Quaker, could you read that in? Oh, that is true. We need to open the public hearing for items 42 through 51. 42, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do have one speaker request form for item number 51. Janelle Think. Janelle, if you'd please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours. Everyone, this is item number 51, please.
Good evening, my name is Janelle Think. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I'm here on behalf of landowners, Mr. Joe Hecker and Mr. Dennis Meyer in the audience this evening. My request to you, or their application to you, is a simple lot line adjustment between two neighbors that creates no additional density in lots, no new development. They're just shifting a, a common lot line. And they're asking for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalks along their particular area. They live in what we kinda know of the, as the Wildwood Development, which is southwest of town. It was an older area developed in 1965, and at that time, it was outside of the city limits, so it was developed to a rural road standard. There was no curb and gutter, no sidewalks, no streetlight conduit in that area. The current requirement today, when you come to plat, is that you have to bring those, those development requirements forward. This particular area doesn't really support sidewalks. We provided some information to you, that I think you had on your dais. Have a letter from our engineer that states that topography doesn't support it in this area. We also provided some road cross-sections, if you're able to re, review or read that type of information that shows the existing ditch sections and how the topography slopes away. And we also have letters from three different sources. One is from the Wildwood Homeowners Association that says they do not support sidewalks in this area. Two other letters from direct neighbors to this area that says they do not support sidewalks here. So, we would ask that you support the variances before you, including the variance to waive the sidewalk requirement. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. This is items 42 through 51. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to any of these items? 42 through 51 inclusive. If not, keep in mind, we do keep the public comment period open during this part of the agenda. And we're on to the continued public hearing consent items, and we have one. Marsha, recommendation is per the recommendation in the agenda? Continue to January 18th? Okay, very good. Item number 42. Let's see, I believe Alderman Quaker, do you wanna read that in, please?
Item 42 is a request by a runner and associates for Skyland Pines East for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalks, streetlight conduit, water and sewer along a portion of Fairmont Boulevard as per 16.16 of the municipal code. This is located west of Rushmore Road and north of Tower Road at the western terminus of Cathedral Drive. The recommendation is to continue to January 18, 2011. That is my motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We're on to the consent public hearing items, items 43 through 49. 43 through 49 inclusive. Let, let me see here. I do need to close the public comment period on items 42 through 51, please. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Now, we're on the consent public hearing items. 43 through 49. Do we expect any of those to be pulled? Anyone? 43 through 49.
49, please.
49? Yep, 49. We will pull item 49. How about any of the rest? 43 through 48. If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent hearing items 43 through 48 inclusive, please.
Sub move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 49. Alderwoman Haddock, that's an assessment, could you, or I'm sorry, Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Item 49 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign Resolution 2010-167B, levying the assessment for the East St. Patrick Street Sidewalk Project, and for the sake of discussion, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Would this be for Marsha? I'm just one, reading, looking at this letter that we had received, or Robert, about, do you think you have any valid concerns here?
Let's go to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
I've had a number of emails, faxes, phone conversations with the Hanson Properties owners, so I'm not sure which one you're referring to, but...
Oh, I see. Well, I guess, he said he requested some, have yet to receive from Public Works Department bid documents and change order documents?
Yes, and I have an email here sent December 13th from Paul Faiman, our project manager, to Mr. Sidney Hanson with that documentation. So, that has been sent, the final change order, yes. I, I guess maybe to answer all of the questions that I've heard. This assessment was ordered in, the sidewalk was ordered in by the council. Whenever we do a project, we publicly bid it. As with this project, we put a set of plans out. It was publicly bid, advertised. Actually, had, I believe, 11 bidders on the project, so it was very competitively billed, bid. In fact, the, the low bidder was significantly lower than, than the average of the bid. So, it was a very good bid award. We had a number of bid items. For every piece of the project that was constructed, there was a bid item for it. It was not a lump sum bid. So, the contractor was paid for actual quantity of sidewalk, dirt, seating, mulching, manhole was lifted, ADA ramps were put in, so there was a bid item for each of those. When we are determining the assessment, the assessment you see before you today, it's based on actual work done in front of that property. Some of the properties had retaining walls, some didn't. Some had a manhole that had to be adjusted, others didn't. There were two ADA ramps that had to be put in. Both were attributed to the lot, Lot 11. I think Mr. Hanson said that it should be, one should be to Lot 10, one should be to Lot 11. No, if you go out and pull the property pins, review the plats, both of those ADA ramps are located on Lot 11. That is why the assessment roll has those ADA ramps attributed to that lot. So, that was done properly as well. I, I think all of the concerns that were brought forward were addressed. I think that, I stand behind the assessment roll that you see before you today. It's the fairest, most transparent, and it really assesses the cost of the work that was done to the benefiting properties.
Is the reason that it's so much more than the 10R is because of the undeveloped vacant lot? I'm just looking at this.
The Hanson's do own a majority of the property where the sidewalk is installed. The other property owner was a Mr. Norberg, and he had two lots. Mr. Hanson had lots 1 through 8, also 16, 11, and 12. So, they did have the majority of the lots that were assessed. So, they had the most frontage foot.
Okay, I guess what I'm interested in is why you're paying more for 125-foot frontage than you are for 150-foot frontage?
One thing to keep in mind is, Mr. Norberg's lot, one of the lots that keeps saying the assessment is wrong, there's a driveway there. So, it may be 150 feet or whatever it is, but there's a large driveway there where there was no work done, so there was no sidewalk installed there. So, you know, when you just look at an aerial map and you measure it,
I see.
it's not taking into account that there was no work done for that driveway portion.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I just wanna use this opportunity to thank Public Works and the contractor for the excellent work done on the sidewalk, and I have seen people using it. And I also appreciate the ADA improvements that were done at the intersection of Ivy and St. Pat with the wheelchair ramps, and those look nice as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
I'd also like to chime in on that. I, I drive that street every day, and I see people using it. They're, I mean, I've been down that road before when those roads were in there, and I seen a guy actually fall off the curb and get hit by a car or by a truck. And I see people using the sidewalk. You've done a tremendous job on it. The assessments seem well, well within line for what work was done over there, and the contractor did a good job that I could see. So, thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Item number 49, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign a resolution levying the assessment for East St. Pat Street Sidewalk Project. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items. Items 52 and, I'm sorry, 50 and 51. Alderwoman Haddock, could you please read an item number 50, please?
Number 50 is authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest a future assessment for insulated curb, gutter, streetlight conduit, water and sewer, and additional pavement along the portion of Una, I cannot get that word right, Unadel Drive, as, as they're located at 6030 Unadel Acres. Move approval.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Marsha Elkins.
Just wanna clarify for, clarify for you, and this is noted in the agenda I distribute beforehand on item 50, that waiver of right to protest does not include the sidewalk, because that was not one of the improvements. The information in the packet is correct, it was just the title, so, just for purposes of clarification.
Very good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 51, please.
51 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and consulting engineers for Joseph Hecker for a variance to a subdivision regulation to waive the requirements to install curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water, sewer, and additional pavement as per chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code located at 6030 Unadel Acres. Prove in part with stipulations and deny in part. Is my motion.
Do we have a second, please? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Marsha, why don't you explain? I know that Ms. Janelle Fisk brought up a couple of issues. Does this address those issues?
No, it does not. There was extensive discussion at the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did not act in accordance with the applicant's wishes. As you see on the attached document, there are several different variances that were requested. The Planning Commission recommended that the variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install the curb, gutter, streetlight conduit, water, and additional pavement be approved with two stipulations, one of those being that the applicant signed the warp that you just acted on, and the second being that the wildfire mitigation plan be submitted for review and approval. They also recommended approval of the request to waive the requirement to install sewer, including dry sewer, with again, the requirement for the warp that you just agreed to. The final item, the Planning Commission did not recommend approving the waiver of the requirement to install sidewalk. They recommend that be denied, and that's the staff's obligation to bring the Planning Commission's recommendation forward to you. I think there was some discussion by some of the staff, or some of the council members about wishing to approve all of the variances that had been granted with those three, essentially with those two stipulations.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a substitute motion that we approve item number 51 as stated, other than that the last sentence would now read that the variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install sidewalk be approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Let's go to... That was about a fourth, but that's all right. Let's go to Alderman Erin Costello.
Thank you very much. While I consistently champion sidewalks in neighborhoods, I certainly understand the, what needs to be overcome to install sidewalks in this neighborhood. And with that, I do know that a lot of families are moving in here, and there may come the time when sidewalks are needed. And I know that as a council, we have the ability to order in sidewalks as we see fit. So, I am comfortable with the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, and Charlene, can you read back the motion, just to make sure I have it right? Approve the variance to the subdivision regulations to waive...
Okay. Prior to city council approval, the applicant shall sign a waiver of right to protest any future assessment for the improvement, and prior to council approval, a wildfire mitigation plan shall be submitted for review and approval, that the variance waiving the requirement to install sewer, including dry sewer, with the following stipulation. Prior to city council approval, the applicant shall sign a waiver of right to protest any future assessments for the improvement, and that the variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install sidewalk be approved.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the applicant that even though the approval on the variance is there for the sidewalk, that you understand that a future council can still come forward and order those sidewalks installed, so that there's not a question at a later date. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Alderman Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just take this opportunity to reiterate Alderman Costello's position and, and understanding that the staff has been directed by the council in the past to, to push the sidewalks, and when, when appropriate, they will be put in. So, and, and I think that that's clear that a waiver of right to protest doesn't mean that that sidewalk will never happen. If, if a neighborhood decides at some point that sidewalks are appropriate, then, then that can happen. And, but I do appreciate staff's position, understanding where we're coming from, that we typically want those sidewalks put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the bill list. Mr. Barbir.
Mayor, you'll see that we do have one very small correction to the bill list. The total that you see listed there is different by $5 than the bill list that was attached to the agenda. There's an item that is actually, it's actually for the, to South Dakota Municipal League for some memberships for the day at the legislature. That amount was initially listed as $205 on the list attached to the agenda. It should've been $210, which increases the total by $5. So, the total amount now for the, correct total for the bill list is $3,567,697.05.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval as presented, which is a grand total of $3,569,697.05. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, let's see what we got here. Jason, is there a reason why we can't take up item 57 ahead of time?
Item 54.
I'm sorry, 54?
Yes, 54 could be taken up prior to the executive session.
Okay. Let's go and read an item number 54. That's going to be a continuation motion. I'm gonna ask, let's see, Alderwoman Haddock, could you please read an item number 54, please?
54 is a second reading of ordinance number 5613 repealing section 17.50110 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to supplementary regulations applicable to mobile home parks and adopting a new revised section 17.50.110 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move to continue till January 18th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue. Item number 54, second reading ordinance number 5613 to the January 18th City Council Meeting. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if anybody sat here all night to speak on that issue, or...
I don't think there's... Marsha, is there anybody in the, I don't think anybody in the audience is here. I didn't have a speaker request form.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to continue to the January 18th City Council Meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, for the purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? Motion and second to go into executive session for the purposes permitted by STCL 1-25-2. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're in executive session. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to contact the International Association of Firefighters in regard to the discussion in executive session.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Can we simply state that our goal is to reinstate the just cause provisions?
I think you just did.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Appropriate discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Green?
I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to contact the FOP in regard to the matters discussed in the executive session.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, I believe there's one more item on your agenda and that is the action on the contract with ASME. My recommendation is that the council impose the contract as per the terms of the last best offer in total.
We have a motion and a second. This is item number 53. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.